All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. This is the Springfield Planning Board. This is our Wednesday, September 1st meeting. We are doing our meeting via Zoom. So if you are not speaking, we'd ask that you mute your microphone. It will help us. Thank you, Phil, if you would do a roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Minio? Absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yeah.
Ms. Moran?
Here.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Yeah.
Ms. McQuade?
Here.
Ms. Choi?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, we will hear our first continued hearing.
And just, just quickly again, just for those who may be watching again due to the Zoom requirements of these meetings that the Planning Board um here as items twice, um, a number of the items that are on the agenda were heard at the previous meeting. Those would be voted on tonight unless there's some reason to continue them again. But the new items uh that'll be heard tonight, uh, the petitioners will be allowed to present. Planning Board members will ask questions and then if the item will be tabled in which time it'll allow for the general public to view the meeting and provide comments if they wish to do so. And at the following meeting, um, those items will then be heard and voted on, and any comments received will be put into the record. Um, so on that note, uh, under public hearings continued, the first item tonight is for a liquor license, location 555 Worthington Street, petitioner Rose Entertainment LLC.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other comments or concerns? Uh, would the petitioner like to make any other additional comments?
Just so the boards aware, I think I sent it out. We did receive a, a letter from the New North Citizens Council. Although it's not, this is not located in the north end, you know, it is, it is a letter of support. I didn't know if he wanted me to, to read that.
Um, did everybody get a, a chance to read it? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 I did read it. I actually had a, a question. Is that? I noticed it was the New North Citizens Council, and this is Chelsea Choi. Is that this, the, the neighborhood that the petitioner is looking to be established? Or is that the downtown neighborhood technically?
Yeah, I mean, they're, this is, the, the, they're not located in the north end, but, but they, they also received a letter from the Armory Quadrant as well, which is the, which is the neighborhood, neighborhood organization for this area.
Okay, that was my concern was that it was, you know, the relevance based on what the neighborhood locale, locale actually was, but I did receive that letter. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Kristen, would you like to make a few comments before we close this hearing?
I'm sorry, I was having some technical difficulties.
Can you guys know all about that? So, no problem.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. What did I miss?
Nothing, really. We just mentioned that we had a letter from the New North Citizens Council. Um, I don't know if anybody else um has seen it. There, a floor plan just came in and a menu um came in. Um, so, um, we just wanted to know, do you have anything else to add to your um presentation?
Yeah, I switched up the, um, I did switch up the PowerPoint a little bit, and I did add in the menu. Um, I finally, since we last spoke, I got, I hired a chef, um, so that's why now I have a more solid menu because I finally have a chef. So, oh yeah, now I have a chef. I'm really excited and, um, I got the plans from my contractor that I hired, so everything looks really good. Um, I thought the two, the little drawing that he sent was pretty cool because you guys can kind of see like how it will look. Um, which I thought was really exciting. You know, I'm still excited about it. And, um, I mean, if, if we want to go through the PowerPoint again, I don't know if we want to, or if you guys have any questions for me.
Um, if somebody has their microphone open and I can hear talking in the background, so, um, I apologize. It just gets disturbing sometimes. Um, do you have that PowerPoint? Can you share it?
Um, I can, I can, I mean, I, I'm not sure we need to go through the whole thing again, but if you want, I can bring it up.
If you could just bring up the menu, that would be helpful.
Give me one second here. Hold on one second.
Because I don't know how many people got a chance.
One second, let me just, uh, let me just get it up. You guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if you can, I can try and zoom in here. So, this is, this is.
People can pinch and screen manipulate it on their own Zoom as well, if that's an option for some users.
Oh, okay.
Oh, thank you, Chelsea. I didn't know that.
I didn't either.
Okay. The menu looks very nice. I, I will say that.
Thank you. Like I said, I'm really excited that I finally have a chef. Um, you know, like someone firm in place.
And, uh, does anybody else need to see the, the menu? Okay. Can you bring up the floor plan, Phil?
I will, uh, attempt that. Hold on one second.
Thank you.
I mean, I gotta kind of do it in my email because I don't, hopefully this, uh, this works. That, can you see that?
Yes.
So this is, oh, so this is, this is the, here's the plan. But I think this is Union Street down, or I'm sorry, uh, Worthen Street, correct? Down at the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay.
This is the main entrance, and then I think the old, uh, dining was over here, so this is you would take a right coming into, so that's, that's the floor.
So, if you're looking at it, the first square is the break time, and then the one behind it is, um, the bakery.
Okay. Do any of the councilors have, uh, questions about the floor plan?
Yeah, yeah, it's Rose Mary. Go ahead. So, the dining area is going to be in the rooms on the right? Is that what I'm seeing? And break time is going to be where the old big dining room was?
Um, I, I, not really. I think that's where the whole dining room was. I'm not really sure, but yes, break time is gonna be that first square. Uh, so that's separate. That's not gonna be a part of, of my building, of my establishment.
Okay, so where are you, where are you doing when somebody wants a private party? Where is that going to be?
It's gonna be in the room closest to us. Um, or actually, I mean, whichever room they want, but each room is able to be kind of closed off for a separate party. They both have their own exit and entrance. They both have bathrooms and they both have a bar area. And they're both connected to the kitchen.
So, on that, on that picture that we're looking at right now, as you go in the front door, the front, go to the left. Now, is, is that block gonna be, you said, the bakery or a bakery?
That's break time.
That's break time. And what's the room behind it, the square behind it?
The one on top of it is the bakery, yes.
Okay.
Kristen.
And then, um, the restaurant or the, the food things are gonna be to the right. The restaurant will have regular hours, right? Somebody will just go in and have dinner.
Yes.
Okay. And is there a lounge area that's just a lounge? Where is that?
So it's gonna be the same area. Um, restaurant lounges, I think it was, it was difficult last time because, um, that's something that I'm familiar with, but then I figured maybe you guys aren't really as familiar with that because it is kind of, there's nothing that's really like that in this area. So, um, a lounge, a restaurant lounge is like a popular place that, you know, more are popping up around, um, around, you know, like New York, Boston, stuff like that. So it's really just a lounge definite, you know, the definition is to sit and relax somewhere. So it's basically just a place you can have dinner, rear wine, on rye, relax. Um, and, you know, listen to light entertainment while you're dining. Now, the lounge part starts in the evening hours. So during the day, you know, it's just gonna be like regular restaurant type things. Um, but as far as the lounge, it's gonna be like the same, the same setup.
So are people sitting at tables or are they sitting in like laid back, comfortable?
Those are tables.
Okay.
Will they be sitting at a bar also?
Um, there is, like I said, there's two bar areas. As of right now, I don't have any seating over there. Um, but there probably will be some seating there. A lot of the restaurant bars, you know, have, like Chili's has seating at the bar, Applebee's has seating at the bar.
Okay. And what are those little black squares? Are they like table for two? Or are they?
Those, the table, so, oh, um, those are, my um contractor wants to change the, the placement of the bar, so he figured that that L-shaped bar would be, uh, better. So, yeah.
All right. Okay. Do any board members have, uh, any other questions?
Um, so when you talk, this is Chelsea here. So when you talk about light entertainment, does that include like live music or do you mean DJs coming in on the weekends? I did notice that on the petition, the weekend hours are, you know, open earlier and until 1:30 AM. So what did you mean by light entertainment?
Well, light entertainment could mean both. So definitely DJs, and then if we have some local live bands that would want to come, um, you know, that would want to come and perform, then, you know, like during the day on the weekends or something, we could definitely set that up too. I don't want to stick to just like one thing because I want it to be really diverse and really fun and meet, um, you know, a lot of people's needs. So I feel like live bands would be cool. I've been to Dewey's. They have live bands, you know, all local bands, and it's really cool to sit and just listen to people play their instruments.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have you gone before the neighborhood council again? Because I know they had their concerns.
No, I didn't go. Oh, um, I did not go over the neighborhood council again.
So, so you haven't had any more conversations with them?
No, just, just you guys, just the planning board.
Okay.
All right. If there are no other questions or concerns, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
All right, just, just on, just one note, I just want to, Kristen, just on the, this break time you're talking about, I just wanted to make you aware that that's gonna trigger a special permit through the city council. So I don't know if that's operating now or not, but I'm just giving you a heads up that, that, that type of use is gonna be considered an indoor place of amusement. It's gonna trigger a special permit through the city council before it can open.
Yeah, that was something that was in there. Those were both in there before I acquired the building. So whatever they.
Well, I'm just letting you know, I don't, I don't believe they have a special permit, so they're, they're not technically allowed to operate. So I'm just giving you a heads up.
Okay, yeah, that's gonna be run by someone different. So I'm, I'll make sure that she goes through all the steps needed. Um, you know, to make sure she gets everything so she can get up and operating.
All right.
I went by the other day and they had hours they were operating and everything. So if they're operating, is that illegal then, Phil?
Well.
Well, they're not, and, and that doesn't have anything to do with me, so that I don't think that's really, you know.
You're the owner.
The owner of the building, so I'm letting you.
Yeah, we're petitioning for the restaurant next door, right?
I know, I'm just, I am just letting you know, you have an operation in your building that needs a special permit. If your building.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. None of them are open yet. We need sprinklers in the building first before anything, and then they can go along with the permits.
Again, I'm giving you a heads up. That's all.
Kristen, we're not here to give you a hard time, though it may seem. We have lots of questions, and that's our responsibility, but we're also here to provide you with information so you don't run into difficulties with the city. And that's all we're trying to do.
Yes, I definitely appreciate all your help. Um, you know, it's definitely frustrating because it is something that I'm trying to do positively, and some of the feedback from some of the members seem a little negative, especially the Mass Live article. Um, you know, it was just kind of shedding a negative light when everything is supposed to be positive and supposed to be fun. So, you know, that was a little disappointing, but I.
We don't control the press, as you know.
I know, but everything was quoted from the meeting. So there were, yeah.
And that's our responsibility.
It's our job.
All right, so, let's try, and, and also let me just say that because of some of the new information you've given us, it's your choice, but it might be something you would want to share with the, uh, Armory, um, citizens.
Yeah, I can definitely forward them, I can forward them the same info as well. I think that they would feel more ease, um, you know, because it's been a little while since I met them, and I have gotten a lot of things together since then, and, you know, things more set in stone. So I think they would like to see that too, that they can feel a little bit more better.
Good. All right then, now, if there are no other questions or concerns from the board, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Rose Mary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Martin. All those, uh, Phil, would you do roll call, sorry?
Voting, voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio? Absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Hearing closed.
Thank you. I will now accept a motion on this petition.
Any discussion at all?
Discussion? We had the discussion, Leo.
Were you gonna, I mean, you can, the, the public carriage closed, but I think if you guys want to.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Sorry.
I, the concern that I had, you know, I've been thinking about this going back and forth, and to me would have falls back on is our role on the planning board in terms of is this an appropriate use of the land? I know the last meeting that we had regarding this threw a lot of concerns about the, not the safety procedures, but they seemed to be a little extreme for, for what was being presented. But as far as the, or, or, I mean, some of the things that we get into, are we sort of overstepping? Um, are there things that the License Commission should be talking about? Or does that fall back on us? I know Phil's always telling us, you know, that's, sometimes we get a little carried away. Um, and I'm wondering if, you know, what our exact role is for this piece of property? Is it to determine, is a lounge slash restaurant slash bar, whatever, is an appropriate use of that land? And if that's what we're here to vote on.
I, 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 to me, that is what the planning board is, is looking at. I, I do think some of the management and the operation and those kind of concerns do fall to the License Commission. I do believe it's in the purview of the Planning Board, however, to look at surrounding land uses to make sure they're compatible. Um, so that has been done in the past, but, but the Planning Board's role is primarily lands.
Thank you, Leo, for saying that.
I will also piggyback on. I'm sorry.
It's Kristen. Can you hear me?
The question, the public hearing is closed.
Oh, okay.
But I also think, Leo, um, that the questions we ask in some respects, hard or easy, is a way for the petitioner to understand what some of those questions might come before the License Commission.
Right.
And what neighborhoods might have concerns because we receive feedback from neighborhoods. So it's just, but I do thank you because it is important for us to make sure that we do let the petitioners know that we vote on the land use, not the management or the security. But those are things we look at in our, uh, do, do, we'll do justice role.
Yep.
So with that, would someone have, do we have any further discussion from board members? If not, I will accept a recommendation, uh, recommendation from the board.
Like, I guess at this point here, going by what I just said, um, I would have to vote to approve that it is an appropriate use of the land.
So is that your recommend, is that the, the motion you're making?
To approve.
Okay, and would you read the recommended conditions?
I don't have the.
I'll read them for you.
Okay.
The recommended conditions, if approved, are the hours of operation shall be later than 12, shall be no later than 12 AM. There shall be no banners, streamers, pennants, or promotional materials located on the exterior of the property. Any and all sign permits shall be obtained prior to installation.
Just before the vote, I just want to, you know, the, the hours of operation are simply a recommend, are the staff's recommendation. The board certainly does not have to agree to those, and obviously it ultimately will fall to the License Commission, but I, I just wanted to point that out. And we try and be consistent with how we review other restaurants. So that's how we're, that's, that's where we're coming from.
I'll, I'll second. Thank you, Jen. Phil, would you do roll call? Uh, vote.
Sorry. So voting on approval of license, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
So, motion's approved and will be forwarded to the License Commission.
Thank you. Phil, would you do the next?
Um, under, again, under public condition, uh, continued, uh, the next liquor license is for an all-alcoholic new uh, location 1373 Main Street, petitioner SC Springfield LLC, doing business as Shaking Crab. But just, just so the board knows, I, I did not receive any additional comments on this one, either for or against.
Okay. Are there any other, um, comments that the petitioner would like to make? Before we close the hearing?
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. Um, if, are there any questions or concerns from the board? Or will it close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Phil, if you'll do a roll call.
Voting to close the public hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Hearing's closed.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I will, uh, accept a recommend, uh, uh, motion on this petition.
I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. One, the hours of operation shall be stated by the petitioner. Two, there shall be no banners, streamers, pennants, or promotional materials located in the exterior of the property. And three, any and all sign permit shall be obtained prior to installation.
Second.
Uh, Phil, if you do roll call.
Voting in favor, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Ms. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along. Um, under continued hearings, zone change, number three, two, three for South Side Morris Street, uh, is a zone change from industrial A and commercial B to residential C. As the planning board, um, again, just for the board is aware, I've, I've not received, uh, any additional comments either for or against.
Are there any other, um, are there any other presentation for the petitioner? Once, twice, three times? You don't have to, I'm just asking.
I, I don't think so. This is undertaken by the city of Springfield. We're just a developer of record, so if there's nothing else that we need to present, I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you. Any board members? All right.
Just, just to remind you, this, in addition to the zone change, it will also special permit, which ultimately will go back to the city council, not you guys, but it, it does have an additional approval.
Thank you.
Gloria, the neighborhood council did, again, just to remind you, they voted to support this.
Yes, thank you. I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So second. Thank you, Martin and Jen, Phil.
Voting in favor, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi, public hearing is closed.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I made a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Voting, yeah, voting to approve, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Uh, zone change is, is approved and, uh, will now be forwarded to the city council, I believe will be heard the 20th, September 20th.
Thank you. Our next petition?
Okay, if I, uh, under, again, under continued hearings, uh, zone change, number three, two, two, three, uh, address is South Side Boston Road, West Side Arnold Street, East Side Gilbert Avenue, is own change from residence A and commercial P to business A, petitioner caring for, caring for others health agency LLC. Um, and again, just, uh, just for the board's, um, knowledge, I, I have not received any additional comment on this one either.
Okay, is there any other, um, information from the petitioner you'd like to share? Okay, hearing, nothing, which is okay. That's all right.
Just for the boards aware too, in, in addition to the zone change here, there, there will be a, a, um, site plan uh, review, which actually come back to you guys. So I know, uh, um, Luca, Minio had some concerns, um, regarding the site plan, but that will be ironed out as we move forward.
Mm-hmm. Hearing no further discussion would.
Yeah, just a question. Go ahead. I don't remember, and I don't have any notes. Did we get anything from the neighborhood council?
Oh gee, I don't remember. I don't remember either.
Well, yeah, so, so what, uh, what we had mentioned in the last meeting is that we had met with them back in July. And they, and we went through the whole presentation with them, and all their members wasn't there to vote, but they told us that they was gonna vote, um, within the next couple of days once they gave, you know, the other members, um, everything, and we haven't heard anything from them.
So they haven't come back negative or positive?
No.
Their meeting is the second Tuesday of every month, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we have met with them in July, yeah, July 2nd, and then August, they said that they didn't have no meeting.
That's right, so it'll be the.
Oh, yes, I remember that.
Okay.
So, Phil, so the issues that Luca had. So Phil, so the issues that Luca had about, on the little um plan that they had here. Where they had parking, like across a city street, so that'll all be addressed down the line?
Oh, yeah, yeah, again, the, I had asked just for a kind of a, quote unquote, conceptual plan to provide the the. Board with information about what they were proposing, but that is not the final plan, and and there are issues with with what they submitted. Which I've already kind of indicated to them when we first met, that, you know. You're you're not gonna be allowed to have that type of parking that backs on the public way, so. Um again, uh due to the size of the facility, it's gonna trigger a a site plan review, so all all those. All those issues will be resolved and and ultimately come back to the board. And then again, you know, with regards to the neighborhood, I, you know, the planning board is. With the zone changes, still does have to go to the city council, so I would, I would recommend that we move forward and and, you know, the the neighborhood would still have an opportunity to. To provide their input at the city council as well.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
I will accept a a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you for, Leo.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen.
Voting to close the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mister Minio absent, Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Warren? Miss Warren? Uh oh, I think I may have lost her. Um Mister Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mister Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
Miss Choi?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other um discussion on this petition? If not, I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Jen.
Second.
Thank you, Leo.
Voting to approve the zone change, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mister Minio, Minio absent, Mister Daniele?
Yes.
Uh Miss Warren, I don't know if she.
No, she's not up.
Mister Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mister Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Yes.
And Miss Choi?
Yes.
Okay, so the zone change is approved, again, this will move forward to the city council, I believe on the twentieth. Okay, so finally, under continued hearings, the last item is a site plan review for ten twenty-one Boston Road. Uh at all, uh is for the construction of a new self-storage facility, the petitioner is Diamond Point Development LLC. And again, uh no additional comments have been received regarding um this this petition.
Are there any, is there any further discussion from the developer? Anything else you wanna say?
No, there's, there's nothing uh to say, except uh on this call, we have our engineer out with Alan Major and our architect. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer.
Okay. Are there any other questions or concerns from the board members? If not, we can close this public hearing.
They'll make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Rico.
Voting to close the public hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Uh Mister Minio absent, Mister Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Warren, are you back? There she is.
Hello?
Rosemary?
Yes, we hear you. Okay, I just lost everybody. I just dialed it on my phone.
Okay.
So what are we voting on?
Well, we're just voting in the public hearing for the site plan review.
For the storage units.
The storage. That was a yes, uh Mister Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mister Florian?
Yes.
Mister McQuade?
Yes.
Miss Choi?
Yes.
Uh hearings closed.
There are no other uh questions or concerns from the board members? I will accept a motion on the site plan.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Rosemary and Leo. Phil, if you would do roll call?
Uh voting to approve the site plan for ten twenty-one Boston Road, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mister Minio? Oh, I'm sorry, absent, Mister Daniele?
Yes.
Miss Warren?
Yes.
Mister Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mister Florian?
Yes.
Miss McQuade?
Uh yes, but are there conditions with that one? I don't, I I have like a separate email, it's not on that one, I don't see it on stuff agenda.
I I think if we just, if we amend the condition to include, amend the approval to include the conditions.
To include the, okay, okay, yes.
And then Miss Choi with with the conditions.
Yes, with conditions.
So, yeah, I think, I think we're okay with that, because I I will send out the conditions on the approval letter when I do that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So that's all set, you're all, you guys are.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next part of our hearing is under public hearings new. Uh the first item to be heard is an all-alcoholic liquor light, new liquor license with location three oh two Cooley Street. Petitioner Casa Valerta Springfield LLC, doing business as Casa Valerto Mexican Restaurant.
Good evening, uh I'm Giovanni Letero Bolina, I'm an attorney and I represent Casa Vallarta. Uh Springfield LLC, doing business as Casa Vallarta Mexican Restaurant. Uh here with me today, I brought uh Ramon Michelle. Uh Mister Michelle is a uh member of the LLC and the manager of the LLC. In addition, we have his son, Brolio, uh Michelle, who will be the manager uh at that restaurant location. Um today, we, as has been represented by the director. We're here because we're seeking an all-alcohol license uh at three oh two Cooley Street. And um if anyone's familiar with that location, that happens to be the former location for a Chili's restaurant. Uh within the plaza, and right now, uh it's, it would be about a two hundred and eleven uh seat occupancy. Um it's within a plaza that has plenty of available onsite parking. The application for the hours that we'd be seeking uh approval for would be uh seven days a week. Eleven AM to twelve AM. Um I just want to represent to the board that there was originally, and I saw in the recommendation letter. Uh uh from the planning department that we had it Monday through Friday on our liquor liquor license application. It's Monday through Friday, as well as Saturday and Sunday. Um so I just wanted to make sure that was clear uh to the board. Uh that it was all seven days, eleven AM to seven AM, eleven AM to twelve AM. Um and uh the uh the idea of the theme of the restaurant is simply a family Mexican restaurant. Um uh Ramon Michelle has over thirty years of experience in the restaurant industry. Um and has operated multiple restaurants, um not only in Massachusetts, Rhode Island. But previously in a past life down in Indiana. Uh so he has a great number of experience, and the food is fantastic. I've personally attended a couple of his restaurants, uh so uh it's a belief that they would be a great asset uh to uh Springfield. Um in this location in particular, um and again, it's a family-themed restaurant uh with a lot of experience and and a lot of quality. Um we have had an opportunity, uh Ramon has had an opportunity to meet with the Outer Belt Civic Association. Um and he has presented to them and addressed questions, um and we opened it up to the board. Um we have submitted a a sample of what the uh menu would look like, and you can see it's an in-depth uh Mexican restaurant. Uh with a a lot of quality food. So we invite any questions from the board, please.
So I have a letter from the Outer Belt that was dropped off today. Is that something you would want me to read into the record, or Gloria?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't receive that, so if you could read that into the record.
Okay. You had a little long-winded here, Walter, but uh just hit the highlights.
Thank you.
On July twenty-seventh, the board and officers of the Outer. Outer Belt Civic Association met with Ramon Michael. Mister Michael's the owner of the Casa Valarte uh Springfield Mexican Restaurant. Suppose he had thirty years' experience in a restaurant. He explained the type of food the restaurant would be delivering, which includes safe serve. Uh when our group uh brought up the tips training, he was also agreeable to that. The restaurant would be conducting fundraisers for the community, they would be providing a mariachi band for entertainment. We suggested he should inquire on an entertainment license through the mayor's office. We brought up our concerns for drinking at the bar with no purchase of food. He advised us that his staff would always offer, you know, the menu or suggest appetizers and serve sauce and chips, you know, to the patrons. Here's, here's where he, there's just a little discrepancy. He said the hours of operation would be Sunday through Thursday, eleven AM to eleven thirty. And then Friday and Saturday, eleven AM to twelve midnight. We did request that if he cha- changes were to be made, he would let us know as a courtesy, and he agreed. We asked that no exterior blinking lights be used, and he stated he had no plans for that. So they also met with Mister Michael's son, Leo, when he moves to this area from Rhode Island. Um I guess he would be the manager, we were hoping this would occur within the next few weeks. Leo will manage working thirty-five to forty hours, plus they will have an assistant manager. A vote was taken by the board uh five to zero in favor of supporting this new business. What the gold president?
Thank you, Leo. Okay, are there any other? But is there any other presentation?
Uh no.
You don't have to.
Nope.
Okay. Do any of the uh board members have questions?
Just about the the hours there. Where they said it would be, um he's saying seven days a week till twelve o'clock. And they head down here, Sunday through Thursday, eleven AM to eleven thirty. So is that doable, is that acceptable, or? Did you want to stick with the twelve?
We'd like to stick with the twelve, but I'll leave it to Ramon if he has any further comment or any discussions.
No, no, I don't have any other discussions. I mean, when we were sitting down and talked about this uh hour, hours, it's because. Uh Sunday through Thursday, we close a little early than the weekends, you know, and it was a little debate. And not debate, but we were, uh we were talking and and we were sitting in in the restaurant about. It's like, we get customers, sometimes they like sit down and they like stay a little late, you know, and I hate to push them then out. But you know, normally what we do, we do the last call. Uh if they close at ten o'clock, we do ten minutes before ten o'clock is last call. Uh you know, I I hate to push my customers out at eleven o'clock. So this is why when I talk to uh my uh attorney, he suggests to let, let's see that we put across the board to twelve. Uh the whole week, so that way we don't create a problem with with the uh council. Uh you know, that just in case the customer stay uh eleven, eleven thirty uh through the week.
Okay. Thank you.
To me, it just sounded like they wanted to be let know if there was a change, you know, it's not a huge change.
No.
I I was at the meeting with the Outer Belt and uh Ramon, and there was a, like he said, there was a discussion over the closing time. And he does have other licenses in Massachusetts, and he mentioned that there would be a closing time. And then after the closing time, diners would still be allowed to finish their dinner, and I said. I don't know how other towns do it, but Springfield, we don't do it that way. Closing time means only employees on the premises. So if you're gonna pick a closing time, you should pick a closing time at which you are comfortable for all of the employees. To be off the front, all the in, customers to be out and off the premises. So if that is midnight, you should pick midnight. Not earlier, and then wa- you know, feel bad that you're rushing them out the door. So there might have been some confusion there at the end, but I remember that being the discussion, and.
Was a couple, a couple of things, you know, I wanna be right on the fine line, you know, I don't wanna like uh. Say at twelve o'clock, you know, wish, you know, for my customers to have plenty of time to to enjoy their dinner and to last drink. But uh be sure that we, we, we normally do uh last call. And we try to not push any more drinks, and actually, my restaurants, we don't push much the drinks, it's more, more food. Uh my percentage is very low compared to uh other, other sides, other restaurants, I see a bar. In the same shopping center, they they really push the drinks, and they're, they're like to one o'clock, you know, uh uh think it's uh. It's right on the corner where uh BJ's is, but that's fine, you know, for us, I want, I wanna get home. Uh you know, I want for my employees to go home early, so we don't push drinks, uh you know, after, after we close.
Okay.
Um only question I, only question I have is how many other restaurants do you have, do you run? I mean, the menu looks really good.
We um between, we are three partners, and between the the three of us, we have seventeen restaurants.
Oh my god, okay.
Yeah.
So a little experience there.
Yeah.
Where are the restaurants?
E- excuse me?
Where are the restaurants?
Okay, Falmun, Massachusetts, Brockton, Sagus, Denver, Mass. Uh we have, we just opened one in Worcester uh last month. Uh uh Norboro, Westboro. Uh and then in Rhode Island, we have one in Araganza, or actually Wayfield. Uh one in uh Warwick, Rhode Island. And then w- we go all the way down to like uh in uh Lake Katrina in New York. We we spend all the way over there.
Wow.
You know, so we, we, we're pretty busy.
I would say.
And we got all, all our partners, we have all the, like, the wives, the kids. My, like, my, my son, um Browley and Ramon, they're my right hand and men, uh you know, they're being. They, they wanna follow, I've been doing this since when I was, uh I became a, a self-employed when I was twenty-two years old, twenty-three. I've been having a little restaurants all my life, and my kids that grow up in the business, and my, two of my kids, and my little girl, she's seventeen. Um they're working in the business, my two boys, the one is twenty-three, almost twenty-four, and Browley is twenty-two. Um you know, they're, they're my managers, my supervisors, they work for me uh all over. And my wife, she works every day in one of the stores, I work every day, so this is a family thing.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or concerns, uh I would uh accept a motion to close the public hearing.
A a motion to continue, Gloria.
Uh, yes, I apologize.
Make a motion to continue the meeting.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Rosemary.
So voting to continue this hearing, uh Mister Cunningham?
Yes.
Mister Minio absent, Mister Daniele?
Yes.
Uh Miss Warren?
Yes.
Mister Steve Filippo?
Yes.
Mister Florian?
Yes.
Uh Mister McQuade?
Yes.
Miss Choi?
Yes.
Okay, this, this uh item will be continued until the September fifteen hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda, uh zone change. Number three, two, two, five, address seven ninety-seven Berkshire Avenue and Rear Berkshire Avenue. This is a zone change from business A to business B, petitioner sixteen twenty-six uh Bay Street LLC.
Hello, Mister Martin, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm very good, I remember when you moved into Pine Point.
Two thousand twenty, two thousand uh.
I don't remember the date.
Two thousand, it was, it was the year of two thousand, it was about February.
Right. Why don't you tell us about your request?
I'm here petitioning for a zone change on seven ninety-seven Berkshire Ave from business A to business B. Um in hopes of transferring from Bay Street to Berkshire Ave, we've outgrown Bay Street and um. We need, we need more room. In order to do that, we need a business B zoning to service and sell. The truck equipment that we're involved in now on Bay Street. Um. We wanna be able to service and sell in one location. So we, we started out uh meeting with the Indian Orchard Citizens Council.
You know, we had an onsite meeting with them and explained to them exactly what we were trying to do. Um, they held a Zoom meeting, they flagged the neighborhood, um, they voted for a, a recommendation of approval. Um, we did receive some opposition from some neighbors after that, that, uh, mentioned they weren't notified and, or they didn't receive it. We had a second onsite meeting, we managed to get all those neighbors there. Uh, originally, we had, we were looking for Industrial A, and then we found out we could do it with, uh, Business B, that's what we had to do. The neighbors were upset with, uh, Industrial A and asked if we would stick with the Business B, we agreed that, and they said they would give us a letter of recommendation to support me if I applied for the Business B, and I agreed to do that, so that's why we're here tonight, looking for Business B.
Okay.
With the expansion of the intersection in front of us, it, it makes for a great fit for our business. The accessibility from the road, the impact on the neighborhood is not gonna be hinder anyone in the area. Actually, we have a much better situation with the intersection to support the traffic that we would generate in our everyday-to-day business.
Okay. What happens to your current property? Do you own that property?
I do, I do. What would happen? I think there would be two scenarios, either it would be listed for sale, or we would try to lease it. I'm not sure which the best situation would be for us, that would be in the future, but we would probably, uh, I would think a lease might work, I, I don't know yet, um, it's up in the air right now.
Just curious, that's all.
Yeah, no, that's fine, no, no, we.
Do the, any of the board members have any questions?
There's just, oh, sorry, just, just so the boards are aware too, in, in addition to the zone change, this is, this will, this will also trigger us a special permit through the city council as well for the, for the repair and, or for, yeah, repairs and, and sales.
Okay, I just had two questions, one, Phil, did you ever get a letter from the, um, neighborhood council?
I was trying to look, I don't re, I don't, I'll, I'll have to look through my emails, I don't remember getting one, but I may have it.
I did send it, I did send it to you, Phil, and I can redo it again tomorrow, it's not a problem, I saved it, I do have it.
Okay, and I can look through my emails, I just, I, I can't seem to find it, so, and again, we're gonna, we can, I'll have it ready for the next hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and my second question, they were talking about one of the concerns the, um, planning people had was the buffer and protecting the, the single-family homes that are there.
Yes, I'm aware of the buffer, and I would assume at some point we're gonna have to submit a site plan for parking and things like that, and that will be included in there with, on that site plan, there'll be a buffer to buffer then, uh, between the housing and my property. There's no objection to that, and I, I wasn't asked if I was gonna do it or not, but I'm saying tonight, stating on record that we are going to do, address that situation and do what was recommended for that.
Okay.
We had put up a fence for one of the neighbors there to give them some privacy a few years back, and adding the shrubbery for, was recommended for a buffer. In addition, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Good to hear.
Yeah, and it also said that, um, part of the property would need to be paved? That is.
Yeah, so our long-term goal is, we're in the process of going forward with redoing the front half of the property, the building, the aesthetics, the, the mechanicals of the building. Building was built in 1959, it's out, it's just at its life expectancy, it's at the end, the electrical, the plumbing, the siding, the roofing, et cetera. So in conjunction with that, we'll be all paving in the front, customer parking, that'll be paved, and where we store the vehicles that are our customers that come in day-to-day business. And we're, we're really an upfitter, it's not, when they say repair, I just don't want anybody to think we're, we're, we're not doing automotive repairs, we're not, uh, a repair shop motor-wise, what we would be repairing is a customer snowplow, a customer's truck equipment, so he might have a toolbox that's broken, a ladder rack, things like that. So when I say repair, it's, it's more of a maintenance thing on a existing product that they own on the vehicle, not repairing a, a mechanical item for the driving of the vehicle, we're not a tire distributor, we're not a, we don't do tires or any types of oil changes, things like that. So in the front, we need paving there for our customers, they can't be walking on dirt, so parking the vehicles that we're working on on the pavement, not an issue, I think, uh, that's in part of our plan, we just haven't submitted that plan yet because we're waiting for the road to get done, kinda to see how that plays out. Um, and then obviously the reconstruction of the building, we're gonna be removing some offices that are currently there now to, it's gonna kind of shrink the building a little bit, create a little bit better parking, it'll all be paved. We have to go before the, uh, I believe it's gonna be, uh, before the DPW, they're gonna have to prove the drainage, and that's all part of the site plan that, um, will complete that phase.
Okay, thank you.
So no problem with the paving.
Are there any other questions from the board?
What's the building currently being used for? You said offices or something?
Yeah, so there's office, and it's, it's currently being used for office warehousing, and we do installs that we can't do on Bay Street, so we have a mechanic that's in there, it's not a retail location, it's strictly a, uh, supplementary to where we're located now, we don't have any retail action going on there right now.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, if there are no other concerns, I will accept the motion to continue this hearing.
Make a motion to continue this hearing.
Thank you, Martin.
Second.
Second, thank you, Leo.
Okay, voting, uh, to continue the hearing, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Minio absent, Mr. Daniele?
Yes.
Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. De Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Okay, I, uh, the item will be continued until the September 15th meeting.
Thank you. Phil, are there?
Yeah, I, I just have one quick, uh, A&R plan, let me just bring that up here real quick. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
So this is actually the, you guys did a site plan review for this a couple, uh, probably over a year ago now, this is.
Yeah.
This is on St. James Avenue, this is the existing gas station, with, with convenience store and the gas station on the corner of Martone and Tapley Street. Um, what they're doing is just basically, right now, there's a number of lots, including the driveway that goes out to St. James Avenue. They're, they're creating a separate lot here, which they propose that sometime in the future will be another retail location, but the, the larger, uh, A&R plan is just incorporating this kind of, all these, uh, larger lots into one, so they can move forward with the construction of the, uh, uh, that, that indoor storage facility that was approved by you guys a, a while ago, so, it looks like they are moving along.
Okay, move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Hey, that's it.
I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
No, we need a motion for.
I heard Rosemary.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
You read my mind.
All those in favor? Good night.
Good night.
Good night.